I'd like to call the Kokomo Common Council to order, Cindy?
Yes, I'd like to.
Could we have invocation, please?
Yes, I'd like to invite Pastor Steve Gomer to the microphone. He's from Mount Gillie at Baptist Church. Thank you so much for coming tonight. I appreciate that.
Let's pray.
I apologize. All may stand or you may remain seated. I'm sorry. This is so crazy.
It's okay. He'll hear us either way, I promise. Oh, Father, we thank you, Lord, for our great city. We're thankful, God, for the prosperity you've given us, for the leadership, God, that you have put in position over us. And, Lord, these have been very difficult times for them and for all of us. And you know, God, the struggles that we have and some weighty decisions that have been made sometimes in haste out of necessity and other times with much prayer and counsel. And all of it, Father, we want to commit to you tonight, Lord. We pray for these men and women that you have called to lead our city. Lord, a lot of them didn't know what they were getting into when they signed up for this deal. And it's been a trying time. God, would you please give them wisdom today? Give them courage, Lord, to make those decisions, Father, for our city, Lord, that will be honoring to you and beneficial to all of us. God, we pray, Lord, that you help them to discern between right and wrong and what is better over and even, Lord, what might be best. God, we thank you for your presence with us, and we pray, Lord, for this next hour in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing or you may sit if you choose to for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Diane? The, everybody has had the minutes, right?
I have.
Would you do roll call, please?
Ray Collins?
Here.
Jason Acord?
I'm here.
Tony Stewart?
Here.
Lynn Rudolph?
Here.
Karen McKibben?
Here.
Matt Greecue?
Here.
Cindy Sanders?
Here.
Roger Stewart?
Here.
Thank you.
Tom Mecklicke is absent.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from March the 9th.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from March 9th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those who approve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you don't approve, signify by saying no. Okay, the motions have passed. Communications. Matt, could you bring us up to date on the bus negotiations?
Certainly. We had sent out the contract that had been agreed on between the negotiating committee and the bus drivers' union. Just some key points from that. I know everybody's had a chance to review that. Really, the biggest part of that was getting a contract in place. We used the existing ASME contract for the majority of that with a few modifications. We did put the bus drivers on the same pay increase schedule as other ASME employees, so they'll receive a 3% pay increase in 2021 and a 2% increase in 2022.
Should I have a motion and a second to approve?
We have allotted money for three shirts per employee as well as a jacket, each of those to have reflective stripes, both so that they can well represent the city as they do their work, but also as a safety, added safety for them as employees. We gave 24 hours of pay time off and added holidays of Thanksgiving and Christmas as paid holidays. So most of these positions are part-time positions, but they work an average of around 32 hours. So it's not a typical part-time position. But with that, the study that Wes put together for this, we should see an increase in cost to the city in 2021 of $61,500 and then an additional increase in 2022 of $48,000 with all the time off and salary increases and so on. So I would move that we would ratify this contract, vote to approve it.
Do I have a second? Second. We have a motion and a second to approve that contract. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. There you go, Bobby. I would also make a motion, or I would entertain appointing Matt Greecue and Tony Stewart, councilman, to negotiations with police and fire. I would entertain a motion to do that.
I make a motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ready for committee meetings? Communications? That's right. We're ready for communication from the floor. Does anybody have anything that they want to bring up? Name and address, please.
Paul Stansfield, can you hear me? Charles Hackett, 115 East Jefferson Street, Kokomo, Indiana. This issue concerns some property that is a couple of doors down from my house on North Union Street. That in the past was utilized for, for a couple of different things. Initially, it was set up as a, basically was set up as a babysitting group for families who wished to take their children there. And it's pretty well done, and I had an opportunity, I'm 40 years of living more, I do, seeing those kids come by every day with their leaders, and it was a good program. I was able to witness that. Then, after they moved in, the churches decided that they would want to put in a halfway house for people who didn't have any place to live. When they did that, I was able to witness some interesting things from the people who were in there. Wasn't much control. They had a standing war with one of the neighbors. Some of them did there, and ended up, one of them ended up pushing her down on the ground and assaulting her. It was not a good thing, and as later on, I was witness to the fact that one of the residents there, and I didn't know at the time which resident it was, sat in the front porch of one of my neighbors. Dorwin Starr has a beautiful home there. Most of you probably know. This place was located just to the rear of that. And at that time, we were able to make a complaint about that first situation to those people who ran the place. And the lady that was running it told us that that was, they were going to be there no matter what. So I told her, I said, we'll see about that. When long thereafter that I witnessed this person on Dorwin's front porch, sitting there and walking back and forth, looking through the windows of Dorwin's place. Now, 36 years of experience in law enforcement has caused me to recognize it, but somebody who's casey a place. No one has many valuable antiques in that house. I don't know whether any of you have ever been in there or not, but it's quite an interesting place. This guy got up after looking the place over from every window, went to the back of the place and sat down on the porch of this halfway house. He then lit up a joint, sat there and smoked it. I called the department. Their department's quite busy. By the time they got there, he was gone. Also witnessed two deputy sheriffs come to that play location and arresting two individuals on warrants. One of them for child molestation, the other one for sexual battery. That was on separate occasions. So they had, we had a little issue there with the neighborhood and the kind of people this place was drawing in. The other day, I read in the newspaper that we are in the process of taking a donation of over $300,000, government, state government donation, to run a, I'm not too sure, Paul Wyman, maybe it's fact, here it goes again, but it was, I was pretty upset to see that we were inviting in COVID-19 victims from five counties, not including, that included Howard County, CAS, Tep, New Miami, and Walbach. My wife has suffered with many maladies. One of them is her inability to handle any kind of infection. At any rate, that gave me concern itself. I therefore contacted the three commissioners, because as I understand it, you folks don't have a damn thing to do with this. You have no power whatsoever as to who moves into that place, because it is, as I have understood, business. So anyhow, I talked to the people who do, and got some fairly good answers. One from Paul that said helped to settle some of my concerns and the fact that he explained to me, practically about Paul, that those persons would be interned there. They would not be out and about. Now, I'm not sure how this place managed to maintain that, but I told Paul that if this becomes a reality, I'll be glad to help, because I'll be the only one in the neighborhood. If I see any of these guys outside of it or breaking any rules from there, I certainly will call Paul, but I told him my way. This concern is that this place over here has become a place for nearly wells and sick people over the last few years. The halfway house was closed down. I understand this grant is important and the fact that it's around $380,000, but it's a little tough for me to understand, and I explained that to Paul about us housing people from CAS, Tep, New Miami, and Walbach County who have the virus. I don't know what the security is like. I hope Paul can explain that, Michael, to do that. He did manage to address some of my concerns. Biggest is that this is going to be locked in. It's going to be like the jailhouse out there, according to Paul. And I am not familiar with the people that are running it, and I don't know how secure they're going to make the place. But I surely know my warning. Those people wandering around my house, especially in the condition that my wife is in. So I bring that question to you, and I certainly bring that question to Paul. And I would like to hear it, so that I can be satisfied, and I know that he has been gracious in talking to Dorwin and some of the other neighbors up there that also have the same concern. And so I hope that he can give us some insight and show what's going on.
Any other, anybody else want to be heard?
Good evening. Jeff Hayworth, 1114 North Indiana. I'm the president of ASME Local 2185. I want to thank Kira and Matt. They were on negotiating team for the city and your support, the whole city council, to do this. This has been a long, tough process and road for everybody. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there any other communication?
My name is Carol Grove, and I'm at 2241 West Jefferson. I also wanted to thank Matt and Kira. They were on the negotiating team for us. I drive for the city of Kokomo. I drive the Spirit of Kokomo buses. It's been a long road, and I'm so very appreciative of this. We just, the bus drivers need something like this, and just thank you so much. Hey, Corbin.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Now's a good time to get it off your chest.
Bob Davis, 114 South Elizabeth Street, Kokomo. Vice President, ASME 2185. I also would like to thank Matt, Karen, city council, Wes Reed, the mayor, Sarah, Jack, all of them involved. This negotiations, I thought, went really well. It, I believe, was maybe Jack's second negotiation with us, Matt and Karen's first. They brought up a lot of good points. I think we brought up some great points. There's no screaming, no yelling. Karen didn't have to throw anybody over the table. But it went really well, and I think it was very mutual and very respectful between all parties. And I'm very proud of that fact, and I appreciate all that you guys done.
Well, it was good to work with you all. In fairness, though, I do think we had some great points, too.
Thank you. This is kind of a love fest, there. Is there any other communication?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So I guess I'll take a couple of minutes and share with you regarding the isolation center, since it's come up for discussion tonight. My name is Paul Wyman, 1533 West Lincoln Road here in Kokomo, Indiana. And so, yes, we have established a short-term isolation center. I believe it's 615 North Union Street. Is that correct? And in the isolation, the purpose of the isolation center is to have a place for homeless people to go should they have symptoms and/or a positive test for COVID-19. And as you guys can imagine, our homeless shelters are communal living, meaning we have anywhere from 30, 40, 50, 60 people living together inside of a shelter. And if you've watched the news at all, you see how quickly the COVID-19 can spread in an environment like that. And so we've been very fortunate that it has not happened yet in one of our shelters. We've had a couple of scares, if you will, but not positive tests. And that really brought to light for us that, should it happen in our shelters, that at any given moment, we could have 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 people infected, and all of a sudden, that would be an opportunity that our healthcare system could be overrun, that our hospitals could be overrun with a tremendous amount of patients infected quickly. And so in discussions with the state regarding isolation centers that they would like to have set up around, we thought this would be a very good idea for our community to have that, since we have shelters here, and it would be a great management tool for us going forward as we try to get to the other side of the virus by not having one of our shelters become a hotspot. And so in that process, the state was willing to award Howard County $380,000 to do this so that we would take care of one of the most vulnerable populations that we have, and in doing so, asked us if we would serve the region. And since we were already going to have the facility, the answer to us was, of course, we would be glad to serve the region. We do a lot of things regionally. So the reality of the matter is this: if somebody at one of our shelters or in a shelter in our area has symptoms or tests positive, they would come to the isolation center for a two-week period. During that two-week period, they would be quarantined to the shelter. So we're not going to have people coming and going from the shelter. Their meals will actually be provided to them by the Kokomo Rescue Mission and brought to the isolation center. So it's a two-week period. Once their two weeks is up and they are cleared by medical staff, then they would return to the shelter in which they were referred to us from. We're in partnership with CAM. We're in partnership with the Rescue Mission, and we're in partnership with Community Howard Hospital. And Community Howard Hospital is providing the nursing and the medical oversight for the facility. We have a 24/7 personnel there. There'll be a fire watch 24/7. We have a fire security system in place. The Kokomo Fire Department has come over and inspected the facility with us to make sure that we have the appropriate fire plan in place. And so let's just keep in mind that these are human beings. They're not much different than you and I. They're just in a different place in life. We've been very blessed, and they struggle. And I will just say that as elected officials, we have as much responsibility to them as we do anybody else in our community. And this is an incredible opportunity to look after them and make sure that they don't carry any more of the burden of the COVID-19 than any one of us would at any given time in our lives. And so this will be run very well. County government is overseeing it, and, like I said, in partnership with those other organizations. Any questions? I'd be glad to answer them for you.
I have a question. Do you have a nurse or anything on staff?
Yeah, so the nurse will not be 24/7 on staff. Community Howard is providing the nurses for us, though, yes.
Do you have security there to keep the people, make sure that they stay?
Yeah, so we have staff that'll be there. It won't be an actual police officer or security, but we'll have staff 24/7 there, yes.
I have a question, Paul. Because they are coming from, you know, the homeless people coming from CAM and the Rescue Mission, do they, how often do they test the people there? Or they just go by symptoms?
Yeah, so those organizations, they do like, yeah.
The Department of Labor, that of Howard County.
Sure, they do like everybody else in communal living.
It's kind of a question I think a lot of people don't kind of understand, but, you know, there's people that are in those homes anyway, and so, and I think they're doing a great job in making, I mean, providing meals and instill the living, living orders.
Sure.
So I just know, I guess what I've seen, what I've learned over this COVID thing, I've been trying to be involved in a lot more things than I have been to be educated about it, that it's, there's a lot of partnerships with, whether it's CAM or the Rescue Mission or people that serve young people, the drug and alcohol. I mean, there's just so many things that partnerships, even the meals that are being provided with the Rescue Mission and the city also is doing some deals, but there's a lot of good partnerships. So, but the goal is that we have to isolate people. I mean, because they're not, they're, if they're mentally ill, or they're, a lot of them are mentally ill, I mean, you know that, you, the past, and so it would be unwise to just let them, you know, kind of wander. Plus, you want to make sure they have a safe place to be and to be provided for.
Yes, thank you.
It's a challenge, but I think it's one, it's a good challenge.
Great. So Paul, is it a voluntary thing that these people come to this?
Let's put it this way, Charlie used the word jailhouse, and I never use that word, so I'd like to correct that on the record today. This is not a jailhouse. This is an opportunity for a homeless person who's living in a shelter, who would not be permitted to live in a shelter as a COVID-19 patient, to continue to have a roof over their head and meals provided to them. I could not imagine any one of them turning this opportunity down, because they will be taken care of, otherwise they wouldn't have a place to go to be taken care of. And so, no, it's not a handcuffs jailhouse type thing. It's a, you have symptoms and you've tested positive, you can't stay inside the shelter. We do have a perfectly good place for you, and can't imagine that we would be turned down by them for that.
Paul, have you prepared them to, them being staff, to keep you posted, and any neighbors, if they have any problems?
Yes, I've talked to a lot of neighbors in the area up there, and by the end of my conversation with every one of them, they've been, you know, very satisfied, and they all have my cell phone number, and I told them that if there's any issues, to call me personally, that since county government is overseeing the project, I'd be more than glad to take those calls and rectify any situations. I'm not anticipating any at this time. And your question about capacity is, I'd say for that size facility, the maximum's probably 50. I can't imagine we would ever have 50 in that scenario, just based on the number of tests that I've seen go through our homeless shelters now. And so this is more of a management tool than it is filling it up right away with people. I can't imagine we'll get there, but there have been some interesting things with this whole COVID thing that I thought I would never say in my life, and they've happened, and we've said them. So falling short of some major outbreak in our homeless community, I don't think we'll ever get to 50. If that happened, then thank God we have the ability to have 50 of them there.
Are there any other questions? Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to reiterate, anybody that comes to this isolation center would be returning back to the shelter they came from, whether it's local or from one of the neighboring communities, for certain.
Wherever they are referred to us from, they would return to that shelter. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you all.
I still like the term jailhouse. Are there any other comments? Okay, moving on. We need committee reports. We have a committee report, Kara?
Yes. I actually have one regarding the violations ordinance bureau. On April 1st, Corbin and I had a meeting to discuss further progressing the ordination, or the violence, or, oh my gosh, violations ordinance bureau. And then on April 20th, I had a conference call with Judge Tate and Councilman Stuart Acord and then Sarah White. We just discussed what further progression we would need in order to make this come to life. So Sarah has since put together a ticket of what you would write for a citation, and then we are still compiling a list of violations that we're going to have on our menu with the price that list. So that is where we're at right now for communications on that. Also, Public Safety also received an email from Fire Chief Chris Fraser, and I can forward this email to the rest of the council members. But basically, he was letting us know that the fire department will be applying for a safer grant through FEMA to help increase the shortage of the department that they're needing. It's, the grant is set up for a 75-25 percentage, so the grant would cover 75% federal, and the city would cover 25% of their funds for the first and second year. And then for the third year, it would be a split of 35% for federal grants and then 65% for city funds. And then he has it all broken down to exactly the dollar of what that would cost us for years one, two, and three, and I will forward that information to you guys.
Thank you. Matt, can you get us a committee report on the dates for the budget that we discussed before the council meeting started?
I can do that. So just the dates that we agreed to were that we would have budget hearings on August 11th and August 13th at 4 o'clock, beginning at 4 o'clock each day, and the final And the final hearing would be on Wednesday, September 23rd, again, starting at four o'clock.
Okay. Do we need to, uh, do we need a vote on that? I want you to know that that first Tuesday is our golf league night.
We appreciate your sacrifice, Lynn.
There, is there any other, uh, committee reports that anyone wants to share with us right now? Hearing none? Is there any other business that we need to conduct? If not, we're going to call a halt to this. Okay? This meeting is adjourned.